I've never coffee down.
You have, don't you? You have not. I would say we never struck that either.
Is it nine o'clock?
I haven't heard a ding ding. He waits for the ding ding.
Well, I'll get them when they come in.
Oh, it's nine. Two minutes behind. The dog is two minutes behind.
That's fast, right, Mike?
We'll get a break in on some of it. We'll see when he gets in.
Where their cameras.
Okay, which faculty do you talk about?
Good morning. Awoken the Berry County Board Commissioners Committee of the whole meeting for March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. If you would please stand for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Reports from state and county officials. Any state or county officials with us this morning, they'll like to give an update to the board. Hearing none. Limited public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Hey, Darrell Cheeseman, Castleton Township. As always, thank you guys for your service to the county. Here in a little while, I will be before you as chairperson for the Berry County Parks and Rec Commission. But prior to that, I wanted to take this opportunity to speak just for myself. You know, the, and boy, try to talk about trying to figure out a way to put a two-year project into three minutes is impossible. But I just want you guys to understand that, you know, when you consider the trail project, that I think it's ARPA money well spent. The, the effects that it will have for the communities that we will be working in will be genuinely appreciated by those that use the trails. I know you guys aren't supposed to banner back and forth during public comment, but I'm really curious how many of the commissioners have walked these trails that we're going to work on? I know Mike has. It'd be really nice if, I know you guys are busy as heck, but man, to get out there and actually walk these sections of trails is priceless information to have. You know, I'm, I'm new to trails relatively, right? Since the two boards were combined. But I've been making an effort to get up to speed on trails, and part of that was going out and walking through these four sections of trails. And, and not only that, the best part was visiting with the people that use the trails. And you can go into it with a preconceived idea of what's best or not best for these trails, or whether they get used or don't used. But once you get out there and start talking to people, you quickly realize how much the trails are appreciated by the people that use them, how much improvements will be appreciated, ongoing maintenance is appreciated by them. You know, I, I started out with a preconceived notion that one hundred and eighth street, well, yeah, absolutely want to pave it because Kent County's paved and we want to continue that. Well, no, not necessarily. The first time I visited, I seen three different individuals walking dogs. They appreciate a gravel and grass trail. They don't want to walk their dog on pavement in ninety degrees in the middle of summer. Fellow that jogs that stretch of trail. He much prefers jogging that stretch on gravel compared to the rest of it on pavement. So the more you can do to educate yourselves, the, the better decisions you can make. You know, one hundred and eighth street isn't part of today's topic when we get there. But I understand you guys are still sitting on millions of dollars of ARPA money, and, and there's further improvements that we could make as part of this project that not all of them are tremendously expensive, you know? Culverts and improved surface elevation and parking lots and stuff like that to make accessibility possible.
Appreciate it. Your three minutes is expired, but I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Charles assures me this isn't an ejection sheet right, seat right through there, so it wouldn't be good. I'm Larry Osborne, Dalton, about as far south in your county as you can get. I'm, as they said on radio, a long time listener, but a first time caller, so I had to see what it was all about. I wanted to stop by and tell you I do appreciate the job you guys are doing. You're getting a lot of stuff accomplished this year, so thank you very much. But just warn you, there is something out there that could derail you. Somebody's poking the Dominion bear, and if you haven't noticed, they are pretty, pretty aggressive financially wise. And I'd hate to see your efforts derailed because all of a sudden you have to pay for a bunch of legal fees and other things. So I plead with you, please do whatever you have to do to make sure you're isolated from all of that commotion, because it wouldn't be pretty. If you look in the news, there's a county down in Pennsylvania right now that's going through that, and it, it's hit them pretty hard financially, so it's no joke. So try to keep up the good work, just don't get derailed. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
If there's ARPA funds left, I don't want Larry giving the committee any ideas. Joel Iverson, Rutland Township. Want to talk a little bit about voter intimidation, at least what it means to me. I was at a meeting recently, and I'd heard something that I'd heard many times before. Well, I'm not going to vote in the election because my vote didn't count in the last election. And that's, that's a very discouraging thing to me. And what, what would intimidate that voter from the polls? Well, I would propose to you a num, any number of the false claims that have been made over the recent election. You remember the claim that there were more votes cast and there were registered voters in several districts? Well, having, that claim came from a person who did not have an understanding that Michigan was M.I., not M.N. So he was comparing precincts in Minnesota to precincts in Michigan. Freeport, Minnesota, I've been there. They've got an excellent restaurant called Charlie's Cafe. They have truck parking. I frequent it often. Population six hundred and eighty. Freeport, Michigan, population five forty-one. Hastings, Minnesota, had lunch there as well. Twenty-two thousand. Hastings, Michigan, seven point five thousand. You can see the difference in, in the number of people and perhaps understand the confusion. Where it gets real personal, because we did a presentation on this. Woodland Township, remember the six hundred and ninety-one missing votes? This is where it goes backwards. Woodland Township, Minnesota, eleven fifty-eight. Woodland Township, Michigan, twenty-one oh seven. Nine hundred and forty-nine population difference. Could that be where our six hundred and ninety-one missing votes that we were alleged to? I don't know. But one thing I do have serious issue with is using people like Patrick Colbeck to be the face of your election integrity issues. Someone who comes to many places, including here in Hastings, and has elaborate presentations designed to tickle your ears. He also compared, in another interview that he did, the sacrifices that the poll workers made at the TCF Center to the white crosses behind Normandy Beach. My grandfather was a World War II vet, served a lot of time in France, Italy, Okinawa. I take serious offense to that. Anyone in Michigan can call for a recount within forty-eight hours of the canvassing. Anyone. If you really think there was fraud, why aren't there some people putting their money where their mouth is and doing that hand recount? May I just couple some more seconds?
Quickly.
There was a number of files here released just recently by our sheriff, and I've spent a great amount of time over the past twenty-four hours trying to read through those and figure out what's going on. A long story short, he claims that there was serving interference in our election. That did not happen. According to the files, there were technical support issues that they were trying to work through in both Cook County, Macomb County, Wayne County, Cook County, Illinois, that is to be specific. And Dominion has multiple offices in multiple countries. The United States, for example, one in Denver, they have one in Canada, and they happen to have an office in Serbia. And there was a collaboration between all those offices, trying to figure out what the problem was so that they could download the data faster to make sure that our election works seamlessly. And in that process, I was kind of impressed, and they were even checking IP addresses to make sure that there was no outside interference that was allowed. And they noticed in one particular instance that there was an IP address that was showing up in Kosovo. Long story short, I'm grateful that they exercised the, carefulness isn't the word I'm looking for, that they did to make sure that the election went down the way that it should.
Thank you.
And a long story short, that's voter intimidation.
Good morning. Gary White in Nashville. There's got petitions that people have heard about, have been passing, or actually canvassing, or being a circulator of those petitions. The one is about the, let me see, the best way to put it. Clean energy, initiation of legislation to amend the clean and renewable energy. The other one is Ax My Tax. Ax My Tax, I actually watched a video on it last night. You can go to axmytax.com, and it seems like it goes back to what used to be and what would make this thing better. Ax My Tax does have a funding mechanism, which is ten percent of state budget from, I think, four different things, which is income tax, alcohol, tobacco, alcohol, alcohol sales, tobacco sales, and marijuana sales. So it's not leaving the taxpayers, it's not leaving essential services out in this by no means. Some of the things I really enjoyed was if there is a proposal for a milledage on property taxes, it takes sixty percent of the voter population, not fifty percent plus one. What also I liked about it is, back when I was village president, it used to have two-thirds of a vote-off committee to approve a budget. I think now it's, it's changed to where it just takes a simple majority. It doesn't take two-thirds no more to approve a budget. I'm not absolutely positive on that one, so I'll say that. But going back to two-thirds is a supermajority, which makes it great. That means you have to get cooperation. Taking the money from the state that they waste all over the place, giving it away, even federal government would be nice to take some of that money that they're wasting all over the place. So when you're criticizing Ax My Tax, if you go, as I said, there's a twenty-three-minute video, I only watched about half of it last night, I'll watch the rest of it. But I will be circulating that petition also now, because it makes, now it makes more sense, and it actually holds government accountable to having to work and not just try to get fifty percent plus one vote on millages and then the two-thirds majority. So also on the renewable energy one, any of the commissioners that bond a petition to pass around to get some help, just put your, you know, put your hand up, and I will get a, a blank petition, because we need to get that on the ballot. I'm not sure I appreciate having to go that way, instead of having this law knocked down, being unconstitutional, taking local control away. I still think that is the better way to go, and that's what needed, what needs to be done, and that does take a coalition against the state, not just one government body. So a government body needs to step up to be the leader of that coalition. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment?
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Rick Moore, still currently the harbor master of the Porton Flake Yacht Club and a founding board member of the Thorne Apple Trail Association and currently president. I also would, I continue to appreciate the support that the county has given the Paul Henry Thorne Apple Trail over the last few years, realizing that Berry County is a recreational opportunity and that the Paul Henry Trail is a revenue stream for small merchants and the campgrounds that are alongside the trail. And that has always been part of my goal, is not only riding my bicycle, eating chocolate, and talking to strangers, is to promote small businesses along the trail. For many years, I, I maintained the trail myself with a trail association's tractor, and the county reimbursed me for diesel fuel and oil. But the only pay I got was a sincere thank you of the people using the trail. And no matter how far away we were from Nashville or Hastings, and it was a gravel section of the trail, there were still quite a few people using it and saying that they used it every single day and asked me if I did. And I said, you know, if I lived along the trail, I'd be using it every day and not getting any work done, because I love riding that trail. I love working on the trail. I love cleaning it up, because the only difficulty along the trail is when children in their strollers drop their stuff out of their stroller, that kind of thing. It's nice to see families using the trail. It's nice to be able to see the clock up there, and I know I'm running out of time, because when I start speaking before a group, another group jumps out at me, and I just keep on talking, because I love the trail. And they keep asking me, when are we going to pave it? And I give them my card and say, well, the trail association and the county needs volunteers and donations to help build the trail. And I'm, I'm getting a lot of support in that regard, and I appreciate the support of the county. We're getting really close to being able to pave through Nashville and behind Thorne Apple Manor as far as the ball fields, because as you know, for years I've been saying, if we pave over, go over those series lagoons and put ball fields out there, it gives the old folks a place to roll out and watch the ball games, and the young people to look at the old folks and say, you know, I better take better care of myself. And we'd all benefit. Well, now we've got that building over there, and the church has got ball fields, and so I want to make sure that the old folks can go as far as the church and watch the ball games there, and the kids at the church could say the same thing. You know, I better take better care of myself. And then we're all healthy in Berry County for going for a walk and not picking on the blue zone group, just because they were saying, hey, go for a walk and eat better food. And if you don't want to, fine. I'm shutting it down right now, but I'm Rick Moore, and I support this message. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Hearing none, we will move ahead with our agenda. First up, Andrew Hartwick with the Remonumentation Survey Contracts.
Good morning.
Good morning, Andrew.
Thanks for having me. And you know, seeing me, it's glorious remonumentation time. I have two items to address this morning, the first being the surveyor contracts for the remonumentation program for twenty twenty-four. These are very similar to last year's contracts for, that were for twenty twenty-three with some minor changes, mostly for, that revolve around the, the grant funds for the year. And it's the same group of surveyors that we had, survey companies, seven in total. And if you have any questions regarding that.
What were the changes in grant funding?
It was about ten thousand dollars. Last year it was sixty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars, and this year it's fifty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight, so just, just over ten grand. So the difference in payment from last year per contract is from seventy-five hundred dollars last year to sixty-four fifty.
Okay.
So obviously that has a reduction in the amount of corners that we can do. So obviously, that has a reduction in the amount of corners that we can do from, we've slated 33 for this year, we got 42 done last year.
33.
Yep.
Percentage-wise, how are we doing?
Doing well. I mean, we're on track as, as we kind of tick away at this, but obviously, it's, it's all funding dependent, as we've discussed in the past. And it's all, that's all based on how many recorded documents come in in a year, so.
Okay. Questions from commissioners?
Mr. Chair. Like 12 years ago, when I was previously on this commission, this work had already started. So he mentioned percentage. About what percentage were we at through this?
I believe, if I'm remembering right, it was about 80%.
80%?
I am, I'm having a hard time remembering. I know we talked about this in the past. It was around 75 or 80% complete, and then there's a maintenance phase that goes on after that. I know we have a handful of townships that have been completely remonumented.
And when would 100% be reached and then you go to the?
That's, that's the, that's the golden question. And that's all dependent on the funding and the timing. So I'd like to say in the next decade, but that's completely up to the, the financial winds.
So the 30, you said you're going to do 33.
33 corners.
They slid, what's, I'm just curious, what's that as a percentage or the whole?
Oh, so not a lot. We have, I don't know the exact total, honestly, but if you think we got 36 square miles in a township, and each one of them has nine corners, and some of those are shared, obviously. So it is a small percentage, as we've been doing this since 1994, I believe. So it's not a lot.
Good, thank you.
When it's time to do this again, would you bring us a real short fact sheet? Yeah, here's how many monuments there are, here's how many we've done, here's how many townships are complete? I think it'd just be good knowledge.
I can do that.
One more quick question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So describe to me, because when I took geometry, a square had four corners. So tell me what the nine corners are.
It's, it's the four outside corners, and then there's quarter corners. So it's the bissection of it. So that creates quarters, section quarters. So you have the northwest, the northeast, the southwest, and the southeast quarter. Each one of those are corners, and then there's a center to each of them as well. So that makes nine per, but it gets, the math is a little, it gets a little different because they have shared corners within the township. So let's say you're in, let's say, section one. Section one and section two share an east and a west corner corner together. So as they, I can draw it if you'd like. And they all have a bingo code, is what we call them. So there's like letters that go across the top and numbers across the side. So it's A through M and 1 through 13. So it'd be like, let's see, B2 would be the common corner between, would it be section five and section six? So those are shared. But when you get on the township lines, it gets a little different, and that's where that little jog, I think we talked about this last time, where the, when you cross into a township and there's a little jog in the roadway, that's where there's, I'm not a surveyor, so you have to, you have to bear with me, I'm a map guy. When they did the original surveys back in the 1830s and 1860s in this area, they'd go around the outside of the township and then they'd fill the township in, square mile by square mile. And then at the end, they would kind of work out the differences in the calculations as they went, because there's no perfect square mile other than on a piece of paper. And when you hit the township line is where they would work those out. So in those instances, you can have multiple corners, where one is for actually the adjacent township, and one is for, one's for township on the north and one's on the township on the south. They'll be in the same line, but they'll be potentially 50 feet apart. So depending on whether you're going to do the survey in township A or township B is depending on which one you would use. I don't know if that answers, does that help answer the question as to why there's nine per and a whole mess of?
I actually am more confused now than before.
It's the opposite of what I wanted to do, but okay.
Surveying is an exact science, apparently.
Uh, there's a little bit of art and science.
Yeah, yeah, interesting. Additional questions from commissioners? Okay. Here again, the chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the board of commissioners approval to enter into the attached 2024 Monumentation Survey Agreements with Aeroland Surveys, Inc., Crane Land Surveying, P.C., Excel Engineering, Inc., Jocker Land Surveying, P.C., Land and Resource Engineering, LRE, R.D. Miller Land Surveying, and Whitman, and authorize the chairperson and grant administrator to sign the attached agreement on behalf of Berry County.
So moved.
Motion by Carlton, support by Hatfield, to recommend of the board of commissioners approval to enter into the attached 2024 Monumentation Survey Agreements with Aeroland Surveys, Inc., Crane Land Surveying, P.C., Excel Engineering, Inc., Jocker Land Surveying, P.C., Land and Resource Engineering, LRE, R.D. Miller Land Surveying, and Whitman, and Whitman.
Whitman.
Whitman, and authorize the chairperson and grant administrator to sign the attached agreement on behalf of the county. Additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
I'm sorry. Did I see Pam Palmer's name in this thing several times, or did I invent that? The county clerks? If so, that probably should be updated as well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And she would need to be authorized to sign as well.
Okay. Good catch. We will make those mutations and change that for the BOC.
I can do that, yes. It's in the signature page, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Next up, the peer review contracts.
Yes, sir. The peer review contracts are, again, similar to last year's peer review contracts for 2023. It's the same six surveyors that I would like the board to consider appointing for this, for this portion of the contract or for the, the project. This is part of the legislative portion of it, where there's a group of surveyors that come together and review the, the documents and all of the facts and approve or deny corners. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to entertain that.
Questions from commissioners? Okay. The chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the board of commissioners to appoint the following licensed surveyors to the Berry County Remonumentation Peer Review Board for 2024. Steven C. Corber with Aeroland Surveying, Michael P. Pratt with Crane Land Surveying, P.C., Cameron Reed Lear with Excel Engineering, Randall J. Jocker with Jocker Land Surveying, P.C., Rodney Lee Bretowig with Land and Resource Engineering, LRE, and Ryan Miller with R.D. Miller Land Surveying, and authorize the chairperson to sign the attached 2024 agreements for peer review services on behalf of the county.
So moved.
Support. Support. Motion by Hatfield, support by Tunison, to recommend of the board of commissioners to appoint the following licensed surveyors to the Berry County Remonumentation Peer Review Board for 2024. Steven C. Corber with Aeroland Surveying, Inc., Michael P. Pratt with Crane Land Surveying, P.C., Cameron Reed Lear with Excel Engineering, Inc., Randall J. Jockers with Jocker Land Surveying, P.C., Rodney Lee Bretowig with Land and Resource Engineering, LRE, and Ryan Miller with R.D. Miller Land Surveying, and authorize the chairperson to sign the attached 2024 agreements for peer review services on behalf of the county. Additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you very much.
Next up, Marilyn Smith, CHIL grant resolution for citizen participation.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Marilyn.
I know I couldn't be heard the last time, so laurette. This is, citizen participation is a requirement of commissioners' programs, and actually, MADC's programs too, and we just need to approve that as a resolution. And then we were the beneficiary of a CHIL grant, which we were hoping to have, thank you, which we were hoping to have, and we were, we received notification that the funds are being held for us, proving, approved, after approval of all the requirements that we have, which we've met all of them except this particular one and the ones that we have before you now. And the program guidelines, which they literally just got back in touch with me about their updates.
Several steps to go through for these grants, but they are worthwhile for the citizens of the county, so.
Absolutely.
They do a great job.
Thank you. And again, it's, it's within the, the primary city, unincorporated villages and villages, not outside. It's not beyond the, the legal descriptions of the entities.
Okay. Questions from commissioners?
This is additional money they got, or is it?
This is what we've been talking about for a couple of months, so it was awarded.
Okay, great.
We've received notification that they are holding these funds for us if we can go through all the appropriate steps, which there are several, so.
I can imagine.
Which we shall.
We shall. We shall conquer. Additional questions? The chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the board of commissioners adoption of Resolution 24-06 to adopt citizen participation plan for the CDBG Housing Improving, Housing Improving Local Livability CHIL Program and approval of the MS-HDA CHIL Grant Administrative Contract with Smith Housing Consulting and Management. The management plan for the county and Smith Housing Consulting and exempt activity from O5-B is required by MS-HDA and HUD for performing the environmental review in Tier 1 and Tier 2 for the CHIL grant.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Smelker, support by Hatfield, to recommend of the board of commissioners adoption of Resolution 24-06 to adopt a citizen participation plan for the CDBG Housing Improving Local Livability CHIL Program and approval of the MS-HDA CHIL Grant Administrative Contract with Smith Housing Consulting, the management plan for the county and Smith Housing Consulting, and exempt activity from O5-B is required by MS-HDA and HUD for performing the environmental review in Tier 1 and Tier 2 for the CHIL grant program. We've got some long ones today. Additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Marilyn. I'm sure we'll be talking soon.
Very soon.
Next up, Casey Smith with SME. Talk about the overview for the Brownfield TIF program.
Do you have a presentation that you can put up there that we sent to Michael?
So yes, we'll pull it up on the screen and then each commissioner has a set of the slides.
Okay. Yeah, we just have a few slides to go through. I'm Casey Smith with SME. This is Elizabeth Mastering, she's also with SME. We have been the Brownfield consultant for the county for a number of years, so we attend the county Brownfield Authority meetings, redevelopment authority meetings, and I work with Dave and Jen quite frequently. I understand you have some housing tax increment financing projects that are coming before you in the near future, including one today. So Elizabeth and I are here to just kind of talk about tax increment financing, see what questions you have, and do a little educational session. There's no approvals or requests from us today, it's just purely educational. So we have a few slides we wanted to go through, and then we'll be open to questions to kind of help you on your way. So Brownfield tax increment financing, there's about like three little things that we want to go through. It's what is it, a quick description of kind of how it works, and then some policy considerations that we should think about as you consider approving these plans that are going to come before you. So the Brownfield Redevelopment Financing Act was from 1996, it's about 30 years ago, just under 30 years ago now. It was established to help incentivize communities to bring in developers to develop challenging properties that were not being otherwise developed. And so it developed tools to help create jobs, create investment, and build those projects that you want to get done in your communities, and have a tool to do that for those challenging properties. And so you'll hear the term eligible property and eligible costs or eligible activities. An eligible property is a property that's either contaminated or has other challenges, like it's blighted, or it's a historic property that needs some, some serious work, or it's functionally obsolete, like it's a factory that's no longer fitting your community's needs or some other type of use that doesn't fit your community's needs. And so these are challenging properties to redevelop, and so these are incentivized tools to get these projects done. So developers will come forward and they will propose eligible activities that are all within the Brownfield law, and they will put together plans that outline those costs that they have for those eligible activities, and those will get reimbursed to them over time through tax capture. So the next slide that we have is a quick schematic. So the simplest way to look at this is the blue bars at the bottom of this, it goes from year one to, say, year 20 on this graph. So in year one, this is a property that has not been redeveloped yet, and it's generating, for this example, it's generating $25,000 in tax a year. In year two, that property becomes redeveloped, somebody does something with that property, and now it's generating three times as many taxes. With a tax increment finance plan, approved Brownfield plan, that developer would get paid back for their eligible expenses. So say they had a million dollars in expenses to get reimbursed for, they would be able to capture the red amount, and the taxing jurisdictions would still take the blue amount. So the taxes that it already generated would still go with those taxing jurisdictions, so they would still collect those taxes. The developer then, through that plan, gets reimbursed after they pay their taxes, that portion gets paid back to them to reimburse them for their eligible activities. And then you look through the years, and in this case, it's, I think it's a 14-year plan, the developer has been made whole after year 14. And then at that point, there's a five-year period where if the county should so decide, you have a local Brownfield revolving fund that the county can then capture that increment and build a fund so that you can have your own local revolving fund that you can grant projects and you can incentivize projects if you so choose. After that five-year period, that becomes a blue line because the taxing jurisdictions then capture all those taxes because the developer's made whole and your Brownfield revolving fund is made whole. That Brownfield revolving fund is a choice of yours, so you can either have that fund or not have that fund. It would speed up the years, the number of years that those taxing jurisdictions would then receive those taxes. So that's something that you'll need to consider as part of these plans, is if you want to include that or not. But that's kind of the simplest form of, of it, is that developers, that red portion, and the communities that have the taxing jurisdictions are the blue portion.
So the local units of government will never lose their base tax that they're receiving?
Correct. And so that schematic is hopefully showing that they'll always get that base every year, and they're just waiting to get that additional increment until the developer's made whole. Yep. So there's nothing being taken away, there's only being created. I'll let Elizabeth kind of go into some of the eligible activities and some policy considerations.
Yep. So activities that are considered eligible for that reimbursement are, they generally fit into three different categories. So you have environmental activities, you have what are defined as non-environmental activities, and then you have housing development activities. Your environmental activities generally consist of environmental site assessments, so like Phase 1, Phase 2, BEAs, hazardous materials surveys. Non-environmental cover statewide site and building demolition activities, asbestos abatement, lead abatement, and mold abatement. And then in the instance of a few specific communities, which are identified as core communities, which the city of Hastings is, or for properties that are in ownership of a land bank, are eligible for also infrastructure improvements as well as site preparation activities. And then the third one, housing development activities, are activities that go towards creating workforce and affordable housing. And so that can entail also like infrastructure improvements needed, rehab of a structure for use for residential, for residential end use, and can also include funding to fill a financing gap to create affordable workforce housing. And that gap is defined as what is the difference between what someone could be making if they sold them for market rate, but choosing to sell at a lower, lower rate to meet those income thresholds. The commonality in all of these expenses are, they're meant to level the playing field. So when it comes to the environmental and the non-environmental activities we're talking about, those are traditionally activities that you would find on urban properties, properties that already have structures on them, might have contamination on them, and those are all conditions that you wouldn't theoretically encounter if you were building on a greenfield site. Similarly, for the housing activities, you would have otherwise market rate housing if not for the incentive to ask a developer to be seeking more workforce and affordable housing level rates.
So if, so if market rate apartments were 2,000 and a developer wanted to do them workforce or, or affordable housing at 1,000 or 1,200, they could, they could qualify for gap funding to cover the difference in some of that?
Yeah, they could utilize TIF and be seeking that future generation of taxes to help reimburse for that hit that's being taken on the, on the run.
But that's all, excuse me, but that's all it is, is just tax incentive?
Yes.
They're not going to be compensated for the lost revenue, correct? Is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, like you're not. Like, you're not granting them any funds, it is contingent on them finishing the development and then creating the taxes, and then proving that they made the investment that they said they would, and that they're at the rate that they said that they would, and then it's a reimbursement from those new taxes to then pay back that agreed-upon amount.
How long is the duration? I mean, you sign up for one year, how many years would you sign up for this?
It's a policy consideration, the maximum of capture can occur is for 30 years, but it's not uncommon to utilize policy to set certain payback limits, depending on perhaps what type of county goals or priorities that it's aligned with.
Okay, thank you.
You can go to the next slide.
So in terms of process for Brownfield plans, the board is likely to see for consideration is on behalf of local units of government that don't have their own Brownfield redevelopment authority, so typically what you're, you'd anticipate seeing is the local unit of government passing a resolution of concurrence that essentially is saying they understand the Brownfield plan, they understand the request, and they are in support of it. In the instance that you have a property that's located in a local downtown development authority, it also might be coming with an interlocal agreement, which is an agreement between the DDA and the Brownfield redevelopment authority that is essentially saying the DDA likely has first rights to some of that tax capture before the duration of the Brownfield plan, the Brownfield plan is going to take priority until it terminates, at which point it would go back to the, the DDA. And so with those two potential local nods of concurrence, the Brownfield redevelopment authority for Berry County would then take up the Brownfield plan as the administrator of the plan, make a recommendation to this body, and then an approval from this body would be what finalizes that local approval of the Brownfield plan. After that, a reimbursement agreement is executed, which outlines the terms and conditions that were established as part of the Brownfield plan. At some point in that process, it is also required under statute that a local public hearing be set and notice is given to local taxing jurisdictions with a minimum of a 10-day notice. So that approval process we just walked through is for the approval of local taxes. If there is a Brownfield plan that is looking to consider the capture of school taxes, they must go to the state to seek that approval. The state agency that they go to is dependent on the type of activities that they're seeking, so you run back to the eligible activities, for the environmental ones, those have to be approved through Eagle, for the non-environmental, that is traditionally approved through the MEDC and the Michigan Strategic Fund, and then for the housing development activities, it's MISTHA that would make, be making the approval for the capture of school taxes. So as far as policy considerations, policy consideration goals, the big question is really how can the county leverage this program to further other goals that you may have? The main one, I think, being this discussion around housing and how this can help fill that need to incentivize developers to build more housing. You technically are able to capture annually administrative fees to help with the reporting that is due to the state every year on Brownfield plans, staff review of Brownfield plan requests, reimbursement agreements, et cetera, and then like Casey mentioned, you do have the ability to establish a local Brownfield revolving fund if you so choose. So just to kind of summarize, the intent of the program is really to facilitate the safe reuse of blighted and contaminated property to incentivize infill redevelopment as opposed to sprawl on green space, and then also can be used to deliver that workforce and affordable housing as opposed to market rate, which workforce and affordable housing under statute is defined as household income that is at or below 120% the area median income.
So that kind of takes us to the completion of just kind of our walkthrough, but you may have questions, if you have questions, we'd be happy to answer, but I think we, one key thing to, to mention is that probably the number one reason that we're here is that there was an amendment to the, to this law that included housing now, and so typically it was traditional Brownfield with these obsolete properties or challenged properties that, that had to do with contamination and whatnot. Housing has been brought into this mix, and so this, there's a Brownfield plan for consideration today, and that is why, the main reason that we're here today is to kind of explain that, because that's been somewhat confusing to us.
Questions?
So is, is the state releasing more money, permission money, towards these projects? Is that what you're trying to tell us?
Well, no, this is independent of MISTHA, and so they delegated the authority for, if, if we bring a project forward and it's a contaminated property with eligible environmental expenses and whatnot, MISTHA will not be involved in any approvals.
Right.
If we bring a housing project forward with a Brownfield plan, the state's school tax capture portion has been delegated to MISTHA, so they have to review the plan that you're also going to review and approve it as well on the state's side. So depending on the type of plan that comes forward, it either goes to Eagle, MEDC, or MISTHA, this is purely just for the taxes that are generated.
Yeah, my question was whether or not they're making this more available as far as funds for these type housing projects.
I would say the big impetus behind amending Brownfield TIF to include the housing development activities is very much aligned with the MISTHA statewide housing plan that they issued a couple of years ago, and is meant to be another tool in the toolbox, especially geared towards housing that isn't quite seeking like a low-income housing tax credit, but isn't also seeking to hit market rate. So it's meant to be something that complements some of the other programs that they have, like their missing middle program as well, but like Casey mentioned, it is a standalone, it's not a, a grant program, but it does fit into a glowing toolbox that MISTHA is trying to develop.
Yeah, because we keep talking about affordable housing, you tell me what affordable is. There's, there's no, as far as I'm concerned, there's no cheap rent anymore available, so it's becoming to a point now where the amount of people that can't afford, you, you hear those stories all the time, they got to choose between paying rent, feeding their kids, there's a lot of choices now that people have to make because of the housing shortage, basically, and I'm just curious whether or not the state obviously realizes this, are they going to make it more available, in your eyes, financial aspects of this, to put these projects in place?
I think they are making a push to.
And I think one key component of these plans is that we have some plans and developments that are out there right now, and without these incentives, the developers are probably going to go market rate with these projects, and so they have to, they have to make up that gap somehow, so either they're going to charge more in rent, or they're going to incentivize these projects to be more attainable, like workforce housing under 120% AMI and whatnot, that's the whole purpose of this stuff. If we don't support that, which the Berry County Housing Needs Survey and Assessment kind of shows we need those types of housing, and so we're trying to add another tool to the toolbox to like, this is one option for the plans, and so there's other projects around that have LI-Tech through MISTHA and things like that, where they get other incentives that maybe don't need this program, this is just a different role of those programs.
Well, I know, in the past, when they've done this, okay, so some, a developer comes in here and they do it, the restrictions were only for one year, so then a certain percentage of, so they did 12 units, okay, so four units had to be at affordable rate, which was reduced, but a year later, that thing shot up $300 a month, so I mean, it wasn't affordable anymore.
On these, on the rental projects, like SME is working on one in Middleville right now on the Midvilla site, so that one will be coming forward later, not today, but at a later time, but there's annual income verification requirements that they have to hit those metrics and they have to prove it, and so I forget the term of those plans, like how long those last for, but they're, they're not one year, they're not five year, they're, they're usually long-term, especially if developers getting a long-term incentive.
That's, that's encouraging.
And we're seeing developers interested in coming into the county, but to make affordable or workforce housing, they want the incentives to go with it.
Right. They want tax abatements, they want all kinds of things.
It has to be approved through the local unit of government, township or city or village, as well as this board to go through, as well as Brownfield, so it's a process that goes through it, we're kind of at the tail end of it, but we haven't seen one of these before in my eight or nine years of being a commissioner, so we thought it'd be good education to get this in front of you guys, give you a chance to see it, because we have a project that you'll be learning about next in Nashville, so, but additional questions?
We're at the monthly Brownfield meetings as well, so if you have questions, you're welcome to come there and, and ask more questions to get more educated, so thanks for your time.
Absolutely, appreciate you. Thank you. Next up is Jennifer Heinzman with the Brownfield TIF plan for 117 North Main Street in Nashville.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So if you all remember, we shared the housing plan with you the summer, last summer, 2023, and according to this, we are going to have at least 2,500 new residents here in the next 10 years, so I don't have to tell you what an issue housing is already. So once we had this housing study completed, we met with a committee which consists of Bonnie Geddes from the Community Foundation, and she ended up contracting with Bruce Johnson from Revitalize LLC, who is here and will come up here next, but we contracted with him to see what we could do about apartments upstairs from all of the buildings in all of our downtowns, and he did just that, went through, so the project we're here to talk about today is one of the first ones that we met with that was eligible, so looking at Lori Courtney's building in Nashville, they are looking to put apartments above their store in Nashville, and I believe you've got all of the, the drawings and designs and things in your packet. So as Casey and Elizabeth said, this is just another tool that we're able to use to help them to cover their costs of the development ahead of time so that they don't have to charge market rate once they get these apartments up and running. So I'm going to let them tell you about all of the details of it, but I'm just here to introduce and show support for this project, I'm going to introduce Dave Van Heren, if I said that correct, he is the consultant from Tritera, Lori Courtney is the building owner, and Bruce Johnson is here from Revitalize, so I'll let them tell you about the project, but we're hoping that you will approve this, it's already been through the village, township, and the Brownfield redevelopment authority, so this is the, the last stop. Come on up, you can tell them the details.
Thank you.
Please sit right down.
Yep, I'll grab an extra chair.
I love your digs, by the way, this is fantastic.
Well, I'm Bruce Johnston, I'm a pre-development consultant that Lori has hired and was hired through the Berry Community Foundation to look into ways to expand affordable and/or workforce housing in Berry County. Lori Courtney owns building at 117 North Main Street in Nashville, and is the first to come forward and to take a look at this program. We are utilizing the MEDC's funds for Build My Communities, it's a program that's offered out there for smaller projects and for developers that weren't really developers before they started, but now she's got her feet wet, you can call her a developer. And she has a beautiful building in downtown Nashville that has, the second story has been vacant for years and years, and the idea was to redevelop those two apartments or to, that unit, area into two different apartments, and Berry Community Foundation has stepped forward and has offered some of their funds for low-interest loans and eventual even partial grants to be able to create this housing to meet workforce housing needs, the, the needs that you were talking about earlier, to keep the rents low and to keep them in a position of affordability for the average working person in whatever city that is coming to town. This was important to Lori and her husband Ferris as well, and they really wanted to focus on the idea of this being a reality. We brought in the MEDC, walked them through the project, told them what our plans were, they were kind of on board, the application is in their hands now, and they're reviewing it all as we speak, looks very favorable. One of the things that we were looking at doing was to find an incentive, many times MEDC asks for skin in the game from the community that's involved, and we went to the city of Nashville and the township of?
Castle Town?
Castleton.
Castleton, and asked them to support a housing TIF, now, as you were just explaining very thoroughly by SME, it's somewhat of a new Brownfield Act option, and in exchange, Lori has agreed to keep the rents at below, not only below 120, but at true fair market for a period of five years during the term of the Berry Community Foundation low-interest loan, and then to also abide by the housing TIF requirements of below 120% AMI for the duration of the Brownfield TIF.
Years.
The years, which is the length of the TIF that we're looking for. So these apartments will be subject to review and subject to income qualifications for all those that apply, and of course, proper screening so that we're getting good working people in there that want to take care of the place and do the right thing. Again, the project is in MEDC's hands, it is ready for their approval, this is one of the things, many times in projects like this, and I'm sure you guys all know this, but to make the numbers work with the cost of construction and the cost of borrowing dollars these days is very challenging, and this was, project was no different, we searched for many different ways, and you know, I give a lot of credit to Tritera, they, they're doing this as a, as a bonus to the community because we've never done one like this before, they jumped on board and are helping Lori out, out of their goodwill to see if we can get this through, but the main purpose was that we had a gap. We never asked for, I can tell you that, I never personally in my career asked for any taxpayer dollars that aren't warranted to make the project work, and with the assistance of these eight years of TIF reimbursement, it allows the numbers to work out to where it was available to be able to brought to MEDC and to the bank for consideration. It is a vital part of the project, and would love to answer any questions that you have about it once Dave gets a chance to explain how it worked. Want to switch places?
So when, when you talk about this TIF reimbursement, where, where's that fund come from?
So I can, I can answer that, it'll come from future property taxes that are generated from the investment into the property, so the, the project includes, is based on a estimated investment of $560,000 into the property, that's to, to do some minor renovation work on the first floor, but mainly build out the two apartments on the second floor, which is a, includes a one-bedroom, one-bath apartment, and a two-bedroom, one-bath apartment. The, so the, the investment of $560,000 into that property will increase the future taxes, property taxes on that, and that's where the revenue comes from, is that capture of the future taxes, that's the tax increment financing portion of, when we talk about Brownfield and housing TIF. The, the, so based on the total investment of 560,000, we do have, there's the eligible activities that are associated with that, you know, the Brownfield activities include some demolition activities, that's the interior demolition and some exterior demolition to make way for the project, then the remainder of the eligible activities are associated with the housing, the housing TIF portion. The, the overall plan is a, an eight-year plan, and the, what's proposed as TIF capture over that eight-year period is $22,000. What we did is we worked with Lori and Bruce and his team several times to see how we can reduce the impact, the, of tax capture to the community, this is a capture of local taxes, and it's been reduced to eight years to allow for $22,000 of capture, that's the minimum amount we think we can, that project can afford and still be a viable project, so we wanted to minimize the impact to the community. I want to just state that this is not a low-income housing project, this is a, what's called a missing middle project, so that's the 80 to 120%, the range of 80 to 120% area median income. The proposed rents that are part of this project are closer to that 80% AMI, so it's, it fits right within that attainable housing category, workforce housing, you know, below market rate, this would allow the future operation or rental of those apartments at close to that 80% AMI income.
So one more question, so you mentioned 560,000, so you're telling me it's going to cost $560,000 to put two units above that?
And, and repair the entire building itself at the same time?
Yeah.
So includes facade improvements, roof, apartments, the whole bit, it's the whole building.
And I, I thank the world with Lori and Ferris, but that's a, that's a lot of money to put into their, their building, that they're going to be reaping the benefits of eventually, right?
It is, it's a big, it's a million. It's a big and...
Okay, so how are we gonna, how are we gonna do this all the way down the line through that whole town? I mean, there's, or in Hastings, there's multiple units here that can be put in, I mean, 100 units in Hastings alone, they can put above these places, but not at that kind of cost, for two units. I mean, that's a lot of money, because first of all, you gotta put all new plumbing up there, the whole nine yards, as far as on the main floor, you gotta basically tear the main floor apart to be able to get to it, right? All the ceilings gotta come out and everything else. I mean, you're putting a lot of money in. My only question is this, that's a lot of money to put in for two units. That's my, that's my statement on this.
Understood, and the grant from the MEDC would be $250,000, that would be granted to them as part of the project costs.
Okay.
So the number gets much better, and the, the bank will only, alone, would appraise for it when it's done. I mean, we are talking about state-of-the-art units as well, even though they're designed to be within affordable clause, we're preparing it for the future, for the day that it does reach outside of the affordability quotient, so these units are meant to last.
So after eight years, that could, that wouldn't have to stay at affordable housing though, right?
Would not, but my experience is that once that eight years, you've set a precedence of what the rents are at, and they tend to just go up with the cost of living versus immediately jack up to all new cost.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So this, I've watched this project moving through the village, and then Castleton Township, and now here. It's been interesting to watch, the Courtney's are pillars of the Nashville business community, and I support this project. Just have some questions, though. So, like, $560,000 is gonna go into this, and there's already building value, what then is the valuation of the building after this is done, you know, to set a new level, or is it just kind of move up from where it is now?
It'll have a different evaluation, obviously, because they'll have apartments in the top of it, and the building will be fully renovated. We're not just putting in apartments.
Right.
There's roof work, there's facade work, rear entry work, modernization of a few of the things into the, in the business itself. That's what Build My Communities is designed for, is to take a building that is functioning, improve what's already there, and then add the apartments, of course, to the top.
Okay, they answered that question, there'll be evaluation right off the bat.
So the bank has already, by the way, I'm sorry you interrupted, but the bank has evaluated the building and has gone through their own appraisal system and do believe that they're warranted for the, for the loan that they're proposing to give, along with the grant. They feel that the building will be worth what they can loan on it.
Okay, so, thank you. You were talking about basing the rent off, what was it, 80 to 120% of the AMI area median income? So what would that, trying to figure out what that would look like, how much would that cost a month, say, for the one-bedroom and for the two-bedroom?
I believe the one-bedroom is 800 and includes utilities, and the two-bedroom is upper nines and includes utilities.
Yep. That's definitely affordable. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional questions?
Right.
So if I'm understanding this right, the total project cost is 559,000, almost, almost 560,000. There's a $250,000 MEDC grant, is that what I heard?
That's correct.
Okay, so the Courtney's investment is roughly $250,000, and what they're asking the board to approve is a tax increment financing plan that monetizes, or that captures $59,587 over eight years, and reimburses that to the Courtney's for their investment, is that...
The total reimbursement is $22,000.
$22,000?
Yes.
Okay. $59,000 is proposed for the Brownfield reimbursement to the developer, okay.
There will be, over that eight-year period, $61,000 in taxes generated from the property. $14,000 of that will be that, if you remember the chart from before, that's the base taxes that are always gonna be paid, and then there will be that increment of increase in taxes, which will be, over that eight-year period, you know, $47,000 in new taxes, with $25,000 of that not being captured, still going through to the, to pay the debt millages and the state millage, and then $22,000 as reimbursement back to the Courtney's.
Okay, so out of a $560,000 project, $22,000 is what you're asking this board to approve?
Yes.
For a tax increment financing over eight years?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. I was just reading, I was reading the statement in there and wasn't sure where the $59,000 was, so...
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I got one more question. What about the sprinkler requirements? Like, in, in Hastings, there's a, there's always been the drawback to people developing upstairs apartments, they were always forced to put sprinkler systems in.
This is happening here.
Is this part of this?
It's part of the cost, yes.
So there's, basically, this is paying for the sprinkler system?
It is.
Okay.
Now, so you'll have fully functional sprinkled building in the middle of downtown that takes away that future possibility of what can happen if...
And that's a huge cost.
The sprinklers, yeah, the sprinklers, interest, the cost of construction right now, those are all adding to this gap in financing. So this $22,000 is gonna help address that gap in addition to the grant from the MEDC.
Okay. Sounds like a viable project, especially for the first one. Like you said, it's a little confusing to walk through it when it's the first one you've seen, but there will be others coming towards it as we look for ways to address affordable housing in the community.
Well, I'm curious if it's gonna happen here, because we've got a lot of potential for downtown development of upstairs apartments, if they're gonna pay for these sprinkler systems involved with it. And that's been the biggest drawback to most people not doing that in the upstairs apartments.
Can I address that just a little bit?
Yeah.
So the, the programs that MEDC has, that we're currently looking at, you're, some of what you were referring to in the past were, you know, community development block grant funds, and they had troubles paying for sprinklers, they like to separate everything out. The programs that are there now are all-inclusive, so whatever the project needs from top to bottom, sprinklers, elevators, whatever they need, they're all considered part of the eligible cost, project cost, and grant-eligible for whatever it is you need. To a certain level, they have the restrictions as well, but they don't pull out sprinklers, they don't pull out elevators, they don't pull out certain items, they say, what does the building need? Perfect example is hers, is a nice small project to start with, as you said, but she wanted to do some improvements to her business. She wanted to add some things that she hadn't been able to do to the downstairs. It's allowed. They're gonna completely do the facade, so there's no more maintenance on that. And one of the things we truly shoot for as consultants and working with our clients is, I call it bulletproofing. When we're done, really all you need to do is paint and maintain what's there, because electrical, mechanical, plumbing is new, it's got air conditioning, it's got all of the needs, the facade is taken care of, all of the sins of the past, whether it be lead, asbestos, mercury, things of that nature, all being addressed as well. So we're trying to do it, and that's part of why the cost is what it is, you're right, it's expensive, and, but the grants are being sized better than they have been in the past, in my opinion, and there's a little more available, and this, believe it or not, this $22,000 out of this project cost really made the ability for the bank to go, yeah, we'll give you a loan, and it made the ability to bring the pro forma to the MEDC and have them go, oh, this project's viable. It's not a lot of money, but in the first eight years, when things are so tight, it really made the difference between a project that doesn't make a lot of sense and one that does. And my last comment would be, we aren't asking for the full tax amount that some projects will moving forward, we've kept it as minimal as possible to make the numbers work, so that the Courtney's and the bank and the MEDC would all be approval.
And I think it's important to note that this has been through the Village in Nashville, they've approved it. It's been through Castleton Township, they've looked at it, had the same presentation, they've approved it. So now it's coming before the board, the Brownfield Board has reviewed it and approved it. So now the fourth step is here at the county board, that they're asking us to review and approve this as well, for a public hearing and approval going forward, so. Additional comments? Okay, hearing none. The chair would entertain a motion to recommend to the Board of Commissioners scheduling a public hearing in accordance with the attached notice of public during the regular Board of Commissioners meeting to be held on April 9th, 2024 at 9:00 a.m., and subject to the public hearing, recommend approval of the Brownfield TIF plan for 117 North Main Street in Nashville, Michigan.
Soon moved.
Support. Motion by Colton, who is supporting that?
Doster.
Doster. Motion by Colton, support by Doster to recommend to the Board of Commissioners scheduling a public hearing in accordance with the attached notice of public during the regular Board of Commissioners meeting to be held on April 9th, 2024 at 9:00 a.m., and subject to the public hearing, recommending approval to the Brownfield TIF plan for 117 North Main Street in Nashville, Michigan. Additional discussion? All those in favor?
I apologize, I just noticed, and we're trying to get a, a public hearing on April 9th. The, to recommend to the Board of Commissioners, that was my error, it does not need a recommendation at this point, because all we're doing is scheduling the public hearing. We're trying to get the public hearing. Jennifer, help me remember, I could, from a timing perspective, to be able to get the 10 days, we need you to take action today, and you can, as a committee as a whole, can do that, because all you're doing is scheduling the public hearing for April 9th. The final action on the, on this item will come then, after the public hearing, subject to any input on April 9th. So my apologies. So if you could change, amend that motion to just say, to schedule a public hearing...
The chair would entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing. Are you okay with amending your motion?
Yes.
And Commissioner Doster?
Yes.
Okay. The chair would entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing in accordance with the attached notice of public during the regular Board of Commissioners meeting held on April 9th, 2024 at 9:00 a.m., and subject to the public hearing, recommending approval to the Brownfield TIF plan for 117 North Main Street in Nashville, Michigan. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The board will stay at recess for seven to 10 minutes, and we'll come back in session. in session. Thank you. The board will come back in session. Next up, Mr. Dan Patton, the request for additional ARPA act funds for the Paul Henry Trail Project.
Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Excuse me. Man, I wish you'd get wider seats. Sorry. My mom produced the big boys.
Frank's went out.
Yeah. So, yeah, we're here this morning to request $72,997.23 for the additional funding needed as part of our ARPA project. I guess, I don't know. So, we made the request for ARPA funding, and I'll have to ask Michael Brown. I don't know exactly where the money's coming from. We're just making the request. I put ARPA because that's where the original dollars came from. Maybe Michael can help explain that.
Sure.
Thank you.
He had my seat, I'll get it.
All right.
So I do have to get back in his chair.
You're in the hot seat now, Dan.
So, the question has come up regarding the funding source and the terminology around these. Well, the ARPA, ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act is a large umbrella, if you recall. So, in May of 2021, the county was awarded $11,955,366 in ARPA funds, more specifically the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. So, if you think ARPA, then these were specifically coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. Those funds were received in two tranches of 50 percent, one in June of 2021, the other in June of 2022. You'll recall that they had significant requirements associated with those funds. Later on, the rules, after numerous changes, were relaxed, or at least the amount that we could allocate to lost revenue was relaxed, if you may. So, we did a process, or the board, I should say, went through a process of committing half of the funds right away. And then, as you were looking at a process for potentially the next set of funds, the requirements were relaxed and we took the, not quite all of that additional, but we then, the remaining ARPA funds, or the remaining, let me rephrase that, coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, and allocated those to the jail and COA construction funds. So, the $11,955,366 that we received in 2021 and 2022 have been fully committed. They haven't all been spent, but they have been fully committed to projects. Then, in November of 2022, under the ARPA umbrella, the state issued and awarded communities, and the county received an award of $100,000 under the local assistance and tribal consistency fund. So, again, the ARPA umbrella, but instead of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery, it was the local assistance and tribal consistency fund. So, the county and all eligible revenue sharing counties in the country were eligible for that. We had to decide if we wanted to apply for those. The board did decide that they wanted to apply for those and decided that while those funds didn't have the same requirements and restrictions that the previous 11.9 million did, in fact, they could be used for anything general purpose revenue could be used for, except lobbying. The one exclusion was you couldn't use them for lobbying. We chose to deposit those into the ARPA Fund, Fund 284. So, we received $50,000 in November 30th of 2022, and then in August of 2023, an additional $50,000. So, in total, we have, what would it be, $12,55,000 to work with. We've committed the $11,955,366. It is being proposed, while these are called ARPA funds, that these, that the 70, I've thrown around so many numbers, the 70...
$2,000.
$2,000, thank you. $977.23 would come out of the local assistance and tribal consistency fund award of $100,000. So, I'll stop for a minute and try to answer any questions if... And it only tipped that many, that much file. It's a file drawer, but it's all good.
And I think the original, and Michael, you correct me, the original request was something either in the $750,000 or $850,000 out of the initial ARPA allocation, and then in conversation, or we raised that to a million. Is that correct?
Yeah, John, I don't, we talked about that for a minute. Do you want to...
That's true. And I believe I made the motion to have it 1.2 million and got shut down on the trails because I want more trails done. But then, we voted to do a million, and that passed. And just other comments on this. When I first seen this out of ARPA funds, I was a no vote because I thought it was coming out of our building fund. And after a conversation today with Michael, that is not the case. That really, to me, it was in the same fund, but it was two different revenues there. And I cannot keep it straight, what this last one is called, tribal something.
Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund. And my apologies that that clarification, it made sense to me, but I didn't think about the details. So, my apology.
So, this is not coming anywhere...
That wasn't clarified.
...close to taking anything away from our building fund, our jail, or anything. And I do believe that these trails are a good thing, but with Darrell's question this morning, chances are pretty good you won't see me on that trail unless you put motors on it.
Get you a three-wheeled e-motor.
There you go. There you go.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
So, I use that trail quite often. I like to ride my bicycle, and it would be great if that was paved in some way because I go from like over by Carl's supermarket and I ride it up to like the trestle over Quaker Brook. And it gets kind of hard riding in some places, so that would be nice to have it paved. So, once again, how much more are we talking about asking for?
The total is $72,997.23.
Okay. And then, Michael, do we have the money?
You do. There's $100,000 of unallocated local assistance and tribal consistency funds that have been deposited into the American Rescue Plan Act Fund that are available.
So, I know you have four priorities. And number one priority is that Nashville portion of the trail. And the number two priority this will work on is up by throwing out the manor in that area. So, that would complete these two areas, correct?
Correct.
And I can say that trail, it's beautiful where it goes. I always see more often than not deer on it and such. And it would be fantastic if we do that.
Commissioner Tennyson?
I appreciate your clarification this morning, Michael, that you told John and I about that because we were both kind of concerned it was going to come out of the ARPA fund. And we found that out, that it's otherwise. Then, you know, obviously, we support the trails. I mean, people enjoy them. I see people walking on them every day in Hastings. And I know they enjoy the whole thing. So, I have no problem with it now, supporting us.
And we've seen with other projects that we've approved with the ARPA funds, that inflation has taken a toll. And it's cut back on what we've been able to do. We allocated more money to the tower for 911 Central Dispatch. So, there's been other things that have needed our help as well. So, chalk one up for it, but I know we're not getting as much done as we had hoped to when we initially put the request in. But I like the fact that the Thorn Apple Trail Association is kicking in $25,000 to help cover, offset some of this cost. So, I think it's reasonable that we can match this as well and pave these two pieces.
I also think that doing this in Nashville, but also around Thorn Apple Manor, I think you're going to see a lot more use there. And there is other projects around there that need to be looked into too, but we'll talk about them later.
There's always another project. Commissioner Doster?
I support the trails. I think this is a great project. However, about 14 months ago, the supervisor of Yankee Springs came before us with an ARPA request for arsenic removal and for looping of the water system. And to me, an infrastructure project that can bring more revenue back into the community is of higher consequence than recreational project. And I think that we've already given them $1 million. I think that, you know, this amount of money would be enough to seed that, to actually, they've been trying to do that project for as long as I can remember, 25 years or something, they've had problems with arsenic there. They have, they have a way to take out a certain amount of the arsenic, but they've got the infrastructure already, the tank and so forth, that they could do a lot more if they could take more arsenic out. And they would create more development on that in Yankee Springs because there are places that could hook up, but they don't really have the capacity, is the way I understand it. So, I'm thinking that that would be a better use of this money.
And just so you know, they never did put in an ARPA request for it because even though it was well advertised, some people didn't get that message. So, they never did submit an ARPA request for it. That was after the fact. And in conversations with Rob, I've put them in touch with Jennifer with the EDA. They are working closely with Yankee Springs Township to find some funding sources for that project as well. And I believe they're looking for, not a stipend, but an appropriation from the government at some point to help complete part of that project or some of that project. So, it is on their radar and they are working on it. So...
I was aware of your assistance in that.
So, where that goes, we don't know yet. But, you know, that's certainly on the radar. So, we're working with it. But additional questions or comments?
I got one question for Dan. So, what project's going to be working on at Shawton Park in the future?
So, yeah, so right now, we're working with OCBA consultants out of Kalamazoo, trying to update just our master plan at that facility. And I think the board has been talking about trying to make some improvements as it relates to, if you remember, we were here two years ago, I think now, applied for a SPAR grant, did not receive that SPAR grant. But I think there's still an interest in trying to get the accessible canoe kayak launch system in place out there. So, I would anticipate some grant requests. And those have to come back before the board because they would be with the DNR. Building wise, in terms of the historic structures in particular, we've been working with another consultant, trying to ascertain just the cost, get a cost analysis on the doors and windows at the museum. You guys see the numbers that are coming back to you for all projects. And certainly, we're not, you know, the exception to the rule here. Our challenges are trying to facilitate as much work as we can with, given the current circumstances surrounding the cost of material and contractors. And it's a challenge. But those are kind of, I guess, if I'm looking, you know, today, those are kind of the two projects that I think are on the horizon. Darrell might be able to speak to some others. But I think in the immediate future, one involving the recreation area, obviously, and then one involving the historic village. You know, we're constantly working on all things out there, both that involve the natural resources and outdoor recreation opportunities and the historic village. School groups started, first one was last Friday, and then they're there every day this week. So, we're, one of our challenges is we're kind of bumping up on the, you know, usually January, February, December, late December, January, February, we don't try to do programs because we're dealing with the 100, 150-year-old buildings that either don't have heat or just don't sustain that wear and tear from, you know, 50 to 75 kids plus two parents each. You know, suddenly, you're pumping 300 people through those buildings every single day. And we're, I mean, we're concerned about that, just the sustainability of that on the structures themselves. So, there's some, there's some challenges on the horizon, I guess, so to speak, but there's also some opportunities. And we'll continue to try to evaluate the buildings in particular as prudent and as efficient and as capable as we can. But I think project wise, that's probably the two. I don't know.
Yeah, I think the museum is at the top of the list.
Yeah. And again, you know, that building now is 80-some years old. So, I don't know. I mean, you guys see it, that and just the difficulty in getting contractors. I mean, I think that's been a problem for us. You know, I'll say this, Bob. We, you know, I know people talk about, well, get volunteers. And you know full well, we, here's probably our number one volunteer, right, sitting right beside me. right beside me. There's another one sitting right over there. There's another one sitting there. I mean, we utilize volunteers as much as possible, but I think one of our challenges is COVID took a huge impact on that. People just aren't as involved, right, wrong, and different. But it's, it's been challenging for us in replacing some folks who are either no longer with us or no longer want to continue to volunteer on any kind of regular basis. Lane Cooper, I think, yeah, leaving Freeport, and probably a number of you have ridden on our trams. There was somebody who volunteered at the park and was able to get us additional things that help us make our events, our opportunities there at Chatham Park just better in every way, and passed away last week. So, yeah, it's a challenge.
I think it's generational, too.
It is.
I mean, it's, you know, it's a different, volunteerism is.
Do you have anything to add to that?
The only generation was, were generous with their time. I just don't know how it's going to evolve from here, so.
Volunteering is not an instantaneous response to a cell phone, and that's the, Jesus, that, yeah, I'll talk about it, that's what it is. Sorry.
Mr. White, do you have a question?
No, I'll pass. Good point.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions from commissioners? Michael, question before I read the motion. Are we still okay using the American Rescue Plan Act funds, or should it be dubbed as local assistance tribal consistency funds?
You know, now that everybody's got that delineation and we've gone through the effort of other than, that's a great catch. I would use local assistance tribal consistency.
Okay. The chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval for an additional seventy-two thousand, nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-seven, twenty-three cents from the local assistance tribal consistency fund for the Paul Henry Thornapple Trail Improvement Project due to inflationary increases from our original granted amount for construction improvements to the Nashville East and Thornapple Manor sections of the trail. So moved.
Support.
Motion by Colton, support by Hatfield, to recommend to the Berry County Board of Commissioners approval for additional seventy-two thousand, nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-three cents from the local assistance tribal consistency fund for the Paul Henry Thornapple Trail Improvement Project due to inflationary increases from original granted amount for construction improvements to the Nashville East and Thornapple Manor sections of the trail. Additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Me.
Noted. Thank you. The motion is approved.
Yeah, thank you, commissioners. I'm going to apologize in advance. I cannot be here next Tuesday. Got to help my dad, well, I got to put a ramp on my dad's house, but I think Darrell's planning to attend next Tuesday if there are any additional questions, but unfortunately cannot be here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darrell.
Thank you.
And Michael Brown, you are up next. Appointments to Planning Commission and members of Solid Waste Oversight Committee.
Yeah, thank you. This is just a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval to reappoint David Hatfield to serve on the Berry County Solid Waste Oversight Committee in the position representing the Planning Commission for a one-year term that began on January one of twenty-four and expires on twelve thirty-one of twenty-four, as approved by the Berry County Planning Commission. They are attached are the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting. Dave has been attending.
I attend as a representative of this board already.
Yeah.
So, and nobody else on the Planning Commission was willing to step forward and do it, so I don't think there's any reason I can't wear both hats.
Okay. You'll have three new members soon, so you can, you know, if there's a change, let us know.
If there's a chance, I might talk one of them into it, yeah.
So, okay, so you are accepting your task at hand?
Yeah.
All right. If there's no further discussion, the chair would entertain, the chair would entertain a motion to recommend of the Board of Commissioners approval to reappoint David Hatfield to serve on the Berry County Solid Waste Oversight Committee in a position representing the Planning Commission for a one-year term that began on one one twenty-four and expires on twelve thirty-one twenty-four, as approved by the Berry County Planning Commission on January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. So moved. Support. Doster? Motion by Tunison, support by Doster. Is there any additional discussion on that? You've already heard the motion twice now. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Graciously, you are welcome. We appreciate you. So, next on our agenda, resolution affirming the board's support of the Constitution. This is from Commissioner Tunison, Commissioner Smelker, and Commissioner Colton. So I will let one of you lead the discussion on this. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair. I've done a lot of research on this. Real quick overview is, I've read a few dozen, a couple dozen of these resolutions from around the state, over fifty, have made similar types of resolutions, and you could put them into three categories. The first is ones that just have a constitutional support. The second group is ones that are Second Amendment support. And then, the third group is the group that is a sanctuary county support. And the first part of this resolution addresses the term sanctuary county, whereas we don't have the ability to tell the sheriff and prosecutor how to be a sheriff or prosecutor, or what they're going to investigate and prosecute. So we don't have that ability. I have a problem with the word sanctuary because it's been used around the country for sanctuary cities regarding, some people call them illegal immigrants, some people call them undocumented immigrants, but it refers to providing harbor for an illegal activity. And in this case, we're not providing a harbor for illegal activity of citizens, but we're dealing with citizens that are, have a right to do something and that are not, in a sense, breaking laws and such, so I just don't like the word sanctuary. So on one end, we work with the original people who wanted to put this forward, looking at language. On the other end, we have people that don't want this at all, and even say, well, how come it doesn't mention the right of women to vote? Why doesn't it mention free speech? Why does it only mention the Second Amendment? So that is the spectrum that we have here, and working towards a compromise. And I learned in the legislature, the best compromise is one where no one's completely happy. And I think that's what we have here, where no one is completely happy. In fact, some are unhappy. And if, I do believe that if we can't put something forward here, that we should just put this issue away. But it's been a festering issue, and I would like to see it come to some type of fruition rather than to walk away from it. So we do have something here that, in its title, mentions the constitutional support, but within it, it mentions within the Michigan Constitution, the right of citizens to bear arms. And it also specifically mentions, singles out the Second Amendment and not any of the other twenty-six amendments of the Constitution. So it has that within it, and I know it's much, much weaker than some of the initial proposals, but it's stronger than a previous one we looked at that was just an affirmation of the Constitution. I think in polling commissioners with that, what we have here today, I don't think we can get the votes to put it forward to the Board of Commissioners, but I would like to suggest one addition to the title of including the words Second Amendment within the title because I would like to see us, of those three categories I mentioned, not just the constitutional support, but the support of the Second Amendment within that group of counties, over fifty. Counties are either sanctuary, county, or the Second Amendment, or constitutional support county. I'd like to see us in that middle category.
Okay. Commissioner Smelker?
I would like to see this go farther, and I would also like to see this come before a full board and not have two missing. So I personally would like to table this until we have full members here and, and look at this further. And I know we've kicked it down the road a long time, but I'd like to get it right.
Commissioner Tunison?
I'm in agreement with John on that as far as, I want to get this done. I agree with Mike on this. We need to get this done as, as the Board of Commissioners. I don't feel this goes far enough in supporting the Second Amendment, and I'm not just saying I only support the Second Amendment, but I am supporting the fact that I think there's an assault on our gun rights, and I want to send a message as a county that we strongly support the Second Amendment, and that's, I just don't know if this goes far enough to do that, so.
Okay. Commissioner Hatfield?
First of all, I strongly support the Second Amendment, always have. I've, I own guns, I shoot guns, yeah, I respect our ability to own guns. But I think there's a right way and a wrong way to go about dealing with an issue where there's a law that we don't particularly agree with. And I think maybe the most recent example of that is how we have responded to the new law of eliminating our ability to deal with certain wind and solar, you know, operations. You know, we've gone on record as opposing that law and requesting that it be reviewed, changed, and we've supported the petition initiative to get it on the ballot. One of our public commentators this morning addressed that. Yeah, to me, sanctuary county is not the way to go. Yeah, I'm not in favor of ignoring a law that we don't happen to agree with. I am strongly in favor of trying to get that law changed. How we best go about that, I'm not sure. I don't think that this resolution necessarily accomplishes that, but I am certainly open to looking at how we best communicate our displeasure and our distaste with some of the recent legislation that's been enacted, but it has been enacted, and, yeah, if, yeah, we don't have, in my mind, we don't have the right to pick and choose which laws we're going to abide by. So until it's changed, yeah, I will abide by it, but I'll do everything I can to change it.
Thank you. Commissioner Doster?
I would agree with those sentiments. I think that we're setting a bad precedent if we go forward with this resolution. We've kind of taken this position that symbolic resolutions, that we wouldn't, we wouldn't deal with, and, you know, if something comes from MTA like that wind, I think that that's, that's a little different. This didn't come from the MTA. This is problematic in, I mean, it can be interpreted in all different kinds of ways. You're pledging support to the constitutions, including the Michigan Constitution, I mean, other than probably, you, have any of us actually read the Michigan Constitution? It's, it's an enormous document. It can be interpreted in a lot of different ways. Are we saying that there be no more amendments to it? Are we saying that, that all case law in the last two-hundred-and-thirty years, that isn't mentioned? Can interpret the Constitution? Can the state legislature make laws that interpret or change gun rule laws, et cetera? I mean, none of that is in here. I mean, somebody could look at this and point to it and say strictly, if it isn't in the Constitution, it, it should not be allowed. And it's amendment. We, we support the Eighteenth Amendment, do we? Probation? I mean, there's always a change. It has to be a living, breathing document. The world has changed a great deal since this thing, it started. It was meant to change. When the Constitution was written, dinosaurs had not even been discovered yet on the planet. I mean, the world changes. And I think that if we start passing these, they have no effect. This has no effect. It's really, it's meaningless. It's symbolic, it's, and it's something that we all have already taken an oath that we support. Are we saying, well, we didn't really support it the first time? Do we have to do it again? It's a playover? I mean, I think it bleeds our credibility. It doesn't enhance it any.
That's Mike Gavitt.
Thank you. I agree with parts of all of your conversations. Mr. Doster mentioned symbolic. That is exactly what this resolution does. It doesn't change anything. It doesn't do anything. I've said before that this board has done a very good job of staying in our lane and not venturing into these political side steps, so to speak, on this. With that said, I know many of us are gun owners and strong two-way supporters, you know. As I've mentioned before, I may be the only NRA person in the room that has an active membership, but I do support it. I just also have to think about the entire county, not just one piece or one part of that county. So when we look at all of this, I guess if you want to table it, if that's the way you want to go with it, that's fine. I think we're continuing to, to talk about the semantics of words, whether we're supporting our Constitution, whether we write Second Amendment on every sentence of every line of every paragraph to be sure that the people who are, are big Second Amendment people feel happy about it, or whether it's in there in the words that is carefully put in there as it is, as it's been said, it's not making anybody happy. You're not covering bases, you're not, you're not making anybody jump up and down. It is a resolution that is entirely symbolic, that just makes a statement on behalf of the board, whether we can get the entire board on page, on pace, or on whatever the case is. So I'm a little tired of seeing it, hearing it come up. However, if it's important to you, it's important, and we'll move forward at some point. And if the wish is to table this until we have a full board, I'm okay with that, too. I just think that we're going to change a word here and a word there, and we're going to keep kicking this thing around like a soccer ball at a kid's game, and no one's going to score. So, you know, whatever the case is.
Mr. Chair? Well, you know, fifty-three hundred counties have adopted this. I mean, it's not like we're the only one in the state of Michigan that's taken a stance, and that's how I kind of feel about it, is that there's tons of people in this county and the state that feel strongly about the Second Amendment, so.
Mr. Chair? Commissioner Smelker? I think he had it, yes.
I've heard mentioned here other amendments, like the Eighteenth and stuff, but I haven't seen why they're under attack like our Second Amendment is. And I know there's different feelings on this board, but I feel that I'm one of them that strongly supports the Second Amendment, and I'm going to try to get the toughest resolution we can get on here to make a statement. But it really upsets me that you guys say that these resolutions mean nothing. That means any resolution we make here, we might as well throw away, right?
No.
Then clarify that, then.
We don't have
We don't have any control over state level politics, other than you can put a resolution together with no teeth in it that doesn't do anything that makes us feel better. When we're talking about a resolution that says, we don't want you taking away our local control of our choices we make for wind and solar, that's something we have control over locally. So.
Not anymore. Not in November.
Yeah. We don't get to make state law as far as guns, but we do have a voice with wind and solar. So there is a difference in some resolutions. But again, this is symbolic.
I believe this resolution would be possibly symbolic, but our representatives would know where we stand. So.
Commissioner Colton?
So I'm kind of looking at the whole group and I'm kind of pulling where we are. I think at best, we're going to be 5-3. At worst, we're going to be 4-4, not passes. As we shift this more to be tougher, it's kind of like, what is that frogs or cats in a pickup truck? Well, we pick up two more and two more jump off the other way. So as we slide this back and forth, it will be good to get our other two members in here with they say, because this is either a 4-4 or a 5-3 proposition right now.
Okay. Commissioners, what would you like to do? Commissioner Colton, Commissioner Smelker, Commissioner Tuneson?
I agree, you know, with most of you that it should be tabled till we're all here.
Question for Mr. White?
I think the U.S. Constitution was a foundation of our country. It's not subject to interpretation like we have been going through. Somebody says, well, this is what they said. This is what they meant. Everybody here, there's a constitutional class that's going on right now that I'm in the middle of, well, week five of it, and maybe been offered that same class. Talks about the Federalist Papers. I'm still sitting there saying, okay. But you have a responsibility to take on government at a higher level, representing the people here at the lower level that you say you represent. The Second Amendment is the one that's under attack right now. Are these laws unconstitutional? That is, as you said, you don't have a constitutional attorney, so you can't get no good advice. So I'm not seeing here where you're subject to interpretation. So that is a poor statement. That is what our problem is. Let's try to interpret it and change the words. So that's where the real problem is. Put a resolution together that makes a statement. And if three or four people don't want to make a statement, are you representing the people here in Berry County that quite often make a statement? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Denny McKenzie, Hastings Township, veteran. If you guys, if you guys put this on the table, you're going to make Berry County a soft target. Okay. We don't need to be soft right now with what's going on in our country. We've got illegal people everywhere. We need to be a strong target. So you don't think about that because it's really important for my grandkids. Because if we don't stand up to this, all these laws that they're passing, then what's going to happen to them when they can't defend themselves? So I just want to tell you that it's really an important issue to stand up when something's not right. Stand up and take a stand for what's right.
Thank you.
Are we doing public comment?
We're using this time and not public comment. If it's, if it pertains to the resolution.
You know me, David.
Did he talk about anything else?
This is a map. 55 counties, state of Michigan. 61% of the counties in the country have Second Amendment verbiage. I've been right now presently to 13 townships. Eight of those have passed the resolutions. There's three of them that were waiting to have not. 50%, right, of the townships have passed this. Why this is an issue, why this is even continuing to go on is beyond me. I sent this out to a couple of representatives at the county and the state, the one that's printed right here. It's not worth the ink it's printed on. Really does not address what we're trying to do here. If you don't stand for something, you stand for nothing. By doing nothing, you are complicit. You say you all support the Second Amendment. I took an oath several times, seven deployments. I support every constitution, I support the Constitution as a whole. The Constitution as a whole, other than maybe the First Amendment right now, is not under attack nationwide like the Second Amendment is. So by making a statement, you're standing for something. And that's what we're asking to do.
Thank you.
Dave Lozma, can I address the same issue?
Sure.
It is important to make a statement. And I agree with, strongly with Commissioner Smelker. It is important to establish a position and make it, in this case, unequivocal. It is the Constitution. It's a constitutional question and an issue that is under attack constantly. We know what the long-term goal is of these efforts to continue to minimize the effectiveness of the Second Amendment. We understand where this is all going eventually. It is time to take a stand. I strongly disagree with the position that the Constitution can be reinvented or reinterpreted. To take an oath to the Constitution and at the same time suggest that the Constitution doesn't have a clear purpose in language to it, suggests that you took an oath to something that you don't understand. And that makes no sense. I think the Constitution was written very plainly, very clearly, has guided this country for a long time. The Second Amendment specifically is under attack, needs to be addressed, needs to be protected, much like we are doing on this effort for land use. This is where, this is maybe the latest attack by the state to take control away from you, the local governing body. And we are fighting back. And that's what needs to happen here with the land use issue and on the Second Amendment issue. It's the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion, Commissioners?
Yeah, I got one thing. Mike, what do you, how do you think we ought to proceed with this?
Well, if we get a meeting, I kind of want to see what both Bruce and Catherine think. I think from statements made of the people around the table today, I know where they are. I want to hear what they say. And then if support's not there, we let it go. If the support's there, we move forward. But either way, I would just like to culminate or just finish this issue. If we're going to do nothing, do nothing. If we're going to do something, do something. But not where we've been, which is in some sort of negotiative limbo.
Let's put a motion to table in front of us.
Make a motion to table this until the next call.
Second. Okay.
I support it.
Okay. Motion to table the resolution of the Berry County Board of Commissioners affirming support for the Constitution. Additional discussion?
Yeah, I would like to put in there that we, to table it until the next call with possible amendments.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Will Goss, please. Yes, okay.
Okay. Doster? Colton?
Aye.
Smelker?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Hatfield?
Aye.
If you had to.
The motion is tabled until the first call of April. Public comment. At this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes.
Once again, thank you for the opportunity to speak, Rick Moore, Director of Board, your commission. I took the oath to respect the Constitution for every board and commission meeting, and I still do. When I moved from in-town Hastings out to Irving Township, they all warned me, "Ooh, watch out, it's the outlaw township." Why? Because everybody has guns. They go, man, out in the country. Those are for shooting varmints. And sometime, if you catch a trespasser on there, they're not necessarily varmints. So you don't get to shoot them. And so you have to have respect for guns and respect for ignorant people who trespass on your property or throw trash on my property like they usually do. I also wish to thank the board and the indigenous Americans, my Indian brothers and sisters, who provided some financial resources for us to continue to work on the trail. I also wish to thank Thornapple Township, because they are buying trail property and bought us a little section, they're buying us a little section of property on Go-Bo Road so we can continue on to Parmalee, onto Calabonia. And my goal has always been to put a plaque up at Parmalee, because there's a place called Parmalee Mountain, where the trains had to hook up a second locomotive to be able to pull up all the pickles that they got from Vermontville and Nashville and Hastings, because I guess we had a big pickle industry back then. They had to use a second locomotive to get up the grade in Parmalee. So the engineers called it Parmalee Mountain. And so I want to promote that. So when people are riding the trail, it'd say, hey, let's go to Parmalee Mountain. Or, hey, let's go to the covered bridges in Middleville, where we hope to build covered bridges to memorialize different commissioners and different people in Middleville that have done so much wonderful things for Middleville. I want to put a covered bridge at Roger Vermont's property, because they're selling the campground on the condition that the guy's buying it on the condition that the trail goes through. Well, right now, I call it my trail, I apologize for that, but there's only one person blocking my trail between Middleville and Hastings and one person blocking it between Middleville and Calabonia. And eventually, I've only been working on this project for 43 years. Hopefully, within another 43 years, I'll have this trail put back together again, because it's a very important recreational opportunity for everyone. And when COVID happened, the trails got crowded, because everybody decided they wanted to go for a walk. And if you walk along Titan Park, you're going a circle. If you walk the Paul Henry Thornapple Trail, you're walking from some place to some place. So thank you all very much. I appreciate the support. Thank you.
Absolutely. We always learn something new. Didn't know we had a mountain in Berry County. Additional public comment?
Hey, Gary White, once again, Nashville. I find myself quite often walking into things I'm not expecting. Today earlier, I talked about the ax my tax. And our agenda items here today were about brownfield tax abatements. So think about if we didn't have property taxes to abate, how many departments would not be there that we are funding? And as I said, once again, state funds, courts and things like that. So you already have state funding coming in for some essential services. There's other, you know, as I said, when you need the amendments, one, two, three, four pages, it's a complete amendment, it appears. It gives the people a choice. Look at what our governor is encouraging to come in to Michigan. Isn't it CCP? Let's give tax abatement, let's give tax dollars to the Chinese, correct? Well, we have too much money in the state that's still getting away to the wrong people. So once again, I can come out here and say, boy, just listening today proves why we need to take the property tax. We need affordable housing. The first thing that happens when you buy property, your taxes go up, because now they're uncapped. The Health Department here a couple of months ago said affordable housing is a health department problem. Another government agency that is spending money on now affordable housing because it is a health problem. It's just amazing how government departments continue to grow and create the problems that they say are a problem. So it just now makes me more enthusiastic about getting signatures on this petition. Once again, anybody on the Commissioners that wants to start collecting signatures for either one of these, let us know and we'll get you. Because you got to have, you know, 10, 15 people. If there's 10 people on a signature, that would help out. As I said, everybody's afraid of change. I've never been afraid of change in my life, but I find out change is usually good. Every now and then, you got to adjust to change. I will say, one thing I don't want to see change is the Constitution and the thought that, jeez, we need to interpret what they meant. We need to interpret and not understand what you took your oath of office to. That was a very good statement that was made earlier today. So I would encourage you to take a constitutional class and understand what that oath is for. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
I have, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Thank you. Good morning.
Hi, Julie Netfor Pratt, Berry County Prosecutor. And I figured with all the discussion and since my name's in that document, I would just address a couple of things, just some food for thought for when you come back. So as we were talking, as my mom used to say, go look it up in the dictionary. So I did. While you guys were talking, I looked up the word sanctuary. And sanctuary is somewhere where you are immune from or safe from something or protected from it. And so I can't, I think a couple of people mentioned that word in that it kind of throws something into this resolution that causes some, maybe some pause. Well, I want to make my position clear. The Constitution itself is your sanctuary. That's your sanctuary. And then you elect people like me, the prosecutor, that can enforce the laws. I'm the executive branch. I don't make the laws. I'm not a judge. I enforce the laws. But with that power comes discretion. And we use our discretion every day. And sometimes the public, there's people in the public that don't like what we did on a case, or they don't like the law itself. I am bound by the laws in Michigan. I do not pick and choose what can be enforced. I'm a citizen. So if something happens to me or my family, if my son or my child gets arrested, or my cousin makes a statement to the police, or their house is searched, the Constitution also protects those people, too. And so I would want the same thing, I would want to be afforded that same protection as everybody else. But within that, within that, the laws are made to protect people as well. And I don't know which laws everybody's referring to, because I didn't hear any specifics. I assume maybe it's the new UPO, extreme risk protection, or the safe storage, or maybe the felon in possession, which has been recently extended to misdemeanors. I would urge anybody that has a problem with any new laws to read them. Give us a call if you have any questions on them. Again, I did not create the laws, but I'm here to enforce them. But please keep in mind that sanctuary gives the impression that you're immune from it, and you're not. I, I will not pick and choose what I will enforce. However, I have the discretion to do what I think is best based on many factors. And so I just want you to know, that's why I can't, I can't commit to anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Mr. Chair, I, I mentioned before that I had an appointment that I have to leave at this point. You are excused. I apologize to anyone that I'm not able to see, hear their comments. I'll listen to the. Thank you, Mark.
So to start where I ended last time. The revelation of the sheriff's office with Twitter X files that he just recently disseminated. The news of Serbian tech support is nothing new. In an article from CSO dated October 5th of 2016, they addressed this. So to think that this is breaking news is simply a fallacy. Why is so much attention brought to it now? Well, to me, it's grasping at straws. Optics. Do I like that this is the case that Serbians are involved? No. But is it indicative of voter fraud? No. Could a person reasonably be concerned? Sure. But understand that this is an almost decade-old issue. And as public as the information has been for the last eight years, I take issue with the prior lack of cognizance on this issue for those who are allegedly concerned. This is part of a theme, sowing seeds of distrust in the election process. Many of these seeds lack any merit and can be objectively refuted, thus contributing to the voter intimidation exhibited in the 2020 election by not acting in good faith, resulting in people not casting ballots because they don't believe that they count. Power, peril, and responsibility. Power. We should be careful if an official spends more time to assert themselves as chief of their branch as opposed to focusing on service to the community. I don't believe that this investigation has been a service to Berry County, but rather a liability. Peril. I do not believe that we will maintain liberty by propagating rights through the peril of others. I want my history in this county to be protecting the rights of others at my peril, at my expense. I'm willing to sacrifice myself, not others, to protect your rights. Responsibility. Our rights have a responsibility. And I'm going to say this twice. Liberty, I believe, is the right to do good, but the ability to do evil with the responsibility to refrain from doing evil. Liberty is not durable in any other paradigm. The right to do good, the ability to do evil, that is demanded, but the responsibility to refrain from doing evil. Otherwise, we are not, we do not have liberty. We are nothing but lemmings. The sheriff's office has issues that need fixing. I intend to get the paperwork to run for sheriff as soon as this meeting is over so I can fix these issues in that capacity. I want to increase transparency in the office, implement a civilian oversight committee, work to reduce recidivism, and make sure taxpayer dollars are spent to the satisfaction of the taxpayer. I want to maintain liberty and restore confidence in the election process through reform and education. This investigation has not been worth the cost. It is time to reappropriate future dollars to serve Berry County.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
John Layton, Township. I really didn't want to speak today, but the Second Amendment came up quite a bit. I know you guys are aware, four of you that are here today were there last year in March and unanimously supported the amendment that we put forth as GOP. I'm not sure what changed. I'm not sure if that decision then was because you were in that crowd and the decision today you're in this crowd. That's definitely not what we want. I know where a couple of you stand, so I'm not talking to you guys. With regards to the Constitution, Commissioner Doster left. The Constitution is, is the gold standard. It stood the test of time. It isn't up for interpretation. In fact, our forefathers went to great lengths when they wrote these. They wrote simple statements in these, but it came through much prayer. Nobody always agreed, just like people here aren't agreeing, but they came to the general consensus of this what it stood for. We get the point all the time, well, why do you need an AR? I don't need an AR. I don't need an M50 if I got to go to war. It's a lot more effective. AR is a pop gun, in my opinion, right? But it, it's getting such a bad rap, right? We're not addressing the mental health issue, right? The Second Amendment wasn't written for sportsmen, it wasn't written for trap shooters, it wasn't written, written for long-range shooters. It was written to defend ourselves against a tyrannical government. If you don't have the Second Amendment, you don't have a first, a third, a fourth, an 18th, you don't have any of them. They're gone. So that's why it's important, in my opinion, that you stand for something by making a statement, by fighting for something, by fighting for your rights. All power is inherent in the people. So that's what we're asking with this, the Second Amendment, all right? And again, the Constitution isn't up for interpretation. It stood the test of time. However, if you go to this class, and I highly recommend it, right? Because I left the class every night mad because you realize how both sides circumvent the Constitution to make it work in their benefit or totally ignore it. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Hearing none. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Colton?
I have no comments.
Commissioner Schmoker?
Here we go again. Resolution. Come from Mac. I laid one on each one of your desks. I support this. It's on wind and solar. And Mac needs our support. And I'd like to see us take this up.
Okay.
And the other thing I wanted is Gary. I want a petition on wind and solar. Wind and solar petition.
Okay. Commissioner Hatfield?
The Personnel and Human Services Committee has now had their first meeting. I just want to explain what you're going to receive from us at the next full meeting. We have moved forward with the idea that any recommendation to the full board that is unanimously approved by all four committee members will go on the consent agenda. If it's an item that is approved by less than the full membership, then it will go under items for discussion unless, in either case, we feel the issue is of significant importance, that it merits full discussion through the call before it goes to the, to the board. So there will be a number of recommendations on next week's agenda that will come as the result of unanimous action by the, by the committee. Otherwise, I think we all felt, you know, those of us that were on the committee, you know, felt that the process worked very well. The interviews went well. We think that having a standing committee of that nature, you know, could, could prove to be very effective for us.
Absolutely. Commissioner Tunnison? Oops, go ahead.
David, you know, on the consent agenda and everything, but we still have a right to ask it to be put out.
Oh, absolutely. Yep. As always, it will be on the consent agenda, but if you want to move it to items for consideration, you can propose that.
Is there minutes for the meeting?
Yes.
And will they be posted?
Yes. Absolutely. Absolutely. They are open to the public and subject to the Open Meetings Act, so. Commissioner Tunnison?
I'm good. Thank you, good. Okay. Appreciate your attendance. There has been a lot of information out there on both the internet, on my email, on phone calls from several individuals who are very concerned about what is going on with Sheriff Lee, with Stephanie Lambert, with her, I think, arrest yesterday, with the information that's been released. And I know this board shares some of those concerns. I put together this statement because people are asking for something as far as where this board stands. I think this represents our views on this. It represents my views on this for sure. I know there's going to be a lot more coming out about this, and we are monitoring it closely, especially from a legal standpoint, because we don't know exactly what twist or turns this will take. So the statement reads, "The Berry County Board of Commissioners is aware of the ongoing election investigation by Sheriff Leif. We are also aware of the information being released on social media to the attention of Representative Jim Jordan. The Board of Commissioners did not review or authorize any such investigation into Dominion and/or their representatives. Sheriff Leif is acting on his own behalf in coordination with other individuals who have ongoing concerns about the 2020 elections. We continue to support our local clerks and believe elections in Berry County are continuing with the utmost integrity and professionalism. The Berry County Board of Commissioners has not been briefed on Sheriff Leif's investigation locally or nationally, and with the release of the latest information, will be withholding any further comment as the process plays out legally between Sheriff Leif, the state of Michigan, and others, other named parties." So I guess from a, from a standpoint of election integrity, we all want elections to be free, to be fair, to be accurate. We all support that. And if there is something here that leads to a further investigation or clarification, by all means, we hope someone will take it up. The concern is a small county like Berry County wrestling with a national investigation of this structure. We know, you can reference the number of people that Dominion has tied up in courts, including Fox News for what, $750 million, that they have not hesitated to put the hammer down where they see misinformation or wrong information come out about their involvement in election integrity issues. So we are continuing to monitor that. We are concerned about that. At this point, there is nothing that we've seen that's come to our attention, but it is on our radar and we are continuing to monitor it. We feel a little bit in the dark with some of this. Like I said, we weren't involved in the release. We just are catching this as things go. So we will keep the media posted if anything else comes of it as far as where we go. But, you know, at this point, it's an interesting turn of events that we didn't see coming. So, you know, but again, I think it's cause for concern, especially legally on the part of this board. So we're continuing to monitor that. So thank you all for coming today. I agree with Commissioner Hatfield. The Personnel Committee had a very good meeting. It was relaxed. Interviewers were people that we were interviewing for planning and zoning and some other positions were very open and involved, and it seemed a little more relaxed. So I think it was a step in the right direction for the committee structure that we're considering in the future. So thank you all for coming. Thank you all for your comments, especially on the second, the resolution for our support of the Constitution and the Second Amendment. So we'll look forward to having that discussion further.
Anything with that?
And we are going to have that on the next call. So thank you. We are adjourned.